Rise for a moment, silence?
Roll call, Mr. President, roll call.
I'm sorry, roll call, I'm sorry. Coming again here. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Present.
Counsel Capano.
Present.
Counsel Chakutis.
Present.
Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Counsel Seer.
Present.
Counsel Field.
Present.
Counsel Lapierre.
Present.
Counsel Lozzi.
Present.
Counsel Net.
Present.
Counsel Staubid.
Present.
Counsel Walsh.
Present.
I'll rise for a moment of silence.
Mr. President, thoughts and prayers to Jeffrey Walker and Attorney Jerome Ogan.
Mr. President, for the victims of the murder of Ray Stoneman, Stonem, Douglas High School.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Counsel Lozzi will accept the minutes.
Don't move. Second.
Communications? We have no communications.
Public hearings.
An act relative to the financial condition of the city of Lynn.
Before we get started, we have a lot of people that are here tonight, and I'm sure everybody has a lot to say, so I'm asking everyone to please be respectful to the other people in the audience, try to keep your comments as brief as possible, try to limit it to between two and three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this? Please approach the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President, to the members of the council, and through you to the members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, to bring a clearer picture on the need for this home rule petition. First and foremost, this legislation will allow Lynn to start down the path to fiscal stability. In order for our city to thrive, we must take action to get our fiscal house in order. We're at a crossroads, and the decisions we make are going to have a great effect on the future of our city. That is why I'm here this evening, and why I'm in support of this home rule petition. But before I get into details of the legislation, I feel it's important to explain why we need to take this step. The city is running a deficit for this current fiscal year of approximately $8.1 million, which by state law needs to be balanced before the fiscal year is closed out. This is a result of several factors. Our current budget was proposed to this council late in the year last year, and this body had limited time to review the proposal before you were all required by law to pass a budget. The time constraint led to a budget which started out of balance last year. Additionally, the city has been dealing with issues and penalties related to our net school spending requirement, which after this fiscal year will be resolved. And our city's expenses, as I've talked about over the last six or seven months, continue to grow faster than revenue. Since last fall, I've been meeting with the Massachusetts Department of Revenue to discuss and clarify our options to find a resolution to this problem, and how we can best utilize the state to assist us. Since being inaugurated eight weeks ago, I've been working closely with the council, Law Department, Chief Financer officer, Executive Office of Administration and Finance, and the Department of Revenue to come up with the best plan possible for us to stabilize the city finances, and how we can build a stronger, more stable fiscal future for Lynn. This bill allows the city to borrow up to $14 million over the next two years to use for operating expenses, which will result in a balanced budget for the current fiscal year, and stabilize the city's finances for fiscal 2019. Additionally, the petition proposes several ways to put our city on better financial footing as we go forward. First is the creation of a supplemental reserve fund. Commonly, you hear this called a rainy day fund. Having funds in reserve will help us to mitigate any foreseen declines in revenue and keep our budget balanced. This fund will make it easier in the future to improve our fiscal outlook and ensure that we live within our means while continuing to provide the necessary public services that the citizens of the community expect. The bill will also create a healthcare advisory working group to review and make recommendations to help us find the best, most affordable options for public employee and retiree health benefits, something that has been identified as a major cost driver of our budget year after year. Part of this process is also showing that we are making progress on expenditures and getting a handle on costs that are driving this budget into a deficit. One of those factors is the trash and recycling expenses, which is currently costing the city over $6 million a year. This bill would authorize a trash collection fee of $90 per unit billed on a biannual basis. The revenue from this fee would go directly to decreasing the costs for the service related to trash and the trash costs in the city. Many similar communities have recognized this budget item and instituted higher fees than we're recognizing here today. Most communities are facing this, recognizing that trash costs are going up, and they have been dealing with it in a similar fashion. Again, many have instituted a much higher trash fee. The language sets up a mechanism for residential and commercial owners to submit documentation for exemption if they have a private trash and recycling pickup contract and an occupied unit, or they qualify as a senior member of our community. DOR has also agreed that it is time for Lynn to remove this requirement for a citywide vote on a bond bill greater than $4 million, and that was part of the ongoing discussions with Department of Revenue, was part of their recommendations. We're the only city in the Commonwealth that has this requirement. Removing it will not only save the costs associated with holding a special election, which is roughly $50,000, but will allow the city to act more expeditiously on opportunities to upgrade and fix our infrastructure needs, many of which are reimbursed or supported by state funding. Ensuring that we have the most qualified personnel in place to serve the people of Lynn is important, which is why we are looking to lift the residency requirement for two key positions that will soon be vacant, CFO and the superintendent. While this doesn't exclude people living or moving into Lynn, it gives us the greatest opportunity to find the best people to move Lynn forward, and again, this was in the discussions with the Department of Revenue, these were recommendations that they made, looking to make sure that we have the best possible chief financial officer and superintendent as we are filling those two positions this year. This petition makes some administrative updates that reflect best practices from other municipalities, and are allowed under state law, including the creation of a fire capital plan, updating the title to Director of the Department of Information Technology, moving the purchasing agent under the authority of the chief financial officer, and making him or her a part of the financial team, combining the treasurer and collector positions upon one becoming vacant, and moving away for pay for print advertising for required public notices. Notices will be published online, bringing us into the 21st century, and again, saving the city money. Lastly, I support the passage of the amendment that will be offered tonight, removing Section 21, clarifying the senior cost for the trash fee, and adding language that appoints someone from the state as a fiscal stability officer for the duration of this bond. These changes come after continued, meaningful, and robust discussions with Administration of Finance, Department of Revenue, again, the council members of staff, and the community. There's been input across the board. Any bill of this type requires the borrowing municipality to fulfill reporting requirements showing a diligent and consistent effort to achieving best fiscal practices going forward. Also, common practice is the fiscal stability officer who will advise us and provide expert opinion on financial decisions as we move past this challenging time, so that we don't have to come back here again to face these challenges in terms of the budget deficit we're facing today. It's imperative that we pass this legislation. After looking at every other option possible, I believe this will give me, the council, and our city the best chance to be more stable, stronger, and be able to plan for our future. The alternative to this home rule petition, and I'm sure many of you are aware of this, would be massive layoffs to the extent that the state would need to take over all control in form of receivership to ensure public safety. And because we're two-thirds of the way through the fiscal year, potential savings from layoffs would be minimal, and the city would still be responsible for unemployment benefits for all those that are laid off. In fact, even if every one of the roughly 600 non-school employees were laid off between mid-April and June 30th, the savings would not even cover one-half of the projected $8.1 million deficit. We would have to reduce the current budget, the school budget, by $2.5 million, which by itself would result in significant layoffs of school personnel. As we look to balance the FY19 budget, it would likely require a minimum of 120 to 150 layoffs, both on the city side and the school side. I've said from the beginning that in order to get our fiscal house in order, we're going to have to make some difficult decisions, and that's where we are today. But these decisions are necessary for our city and for the well-being of the people of Lynn. I hope that the council will join me in these steps to invest in Lynn's future. I thank you for listening, look forward to your support, and again, look forward to continuing work with you to get past this challenge we face today, and work towards a better tomorrow for the community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
James McDonald, 25 Split Rock Road, Lynn, Massachusetts. I'm the former Fire Chief of the City of Lynn. I have that effect. For the past five years as the chief of the fire department, we have done nothing but go backwards as far as funding, manpower, equipment, conditions of the firehouse. On a personal level, my wife and I pay $7,200 or more in property taxes every single year, so I stand here as a person who pays that much money, and I am in favor of this legislation to pass. As far as the trash fee goes, I know that if we free up money in the tune to $2.5 million for trash payments, I know that that's going to come back to the other departments who are woefully in need of money to stay operating and provide the services which they do. And I implore you to pass this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
I'm going to break the ice by putting on my glasses. My wife says I need them, I just think they make me look more sophisticated. All right, so, again, thank you, Mr. President, all the 11 councilors, city councilors that are here. I fully applaud the mayor and the city council on the effort to eliminate the budget deficit. That being said, I'm not quite sure what the numbers are, I mean, this is an open forum, maybe I'm not supposed to ask questions, but I'm not quite sure whether it's $14 million or $16 million, I know it's over the next 10 years. Other questions I would have is, and again, pardon, shouldn't be asking questions, but so my idea is that this legislative proposal will balance the budget for the next two years. What I want to know as a taxpayer, and I'm not representing the department I work for, is year three and beyond, I hope there's safeguards preventing another deficit, I think the mayor did speak to that, and I don't want to be just kicking the can down the road. I also accept the fact that the mayor, Mayor McGee, bears no responsibility whatsoever regarding this deficit, and is taking on the challenge head-on. I just don't know how we got to this point, I know the whole school spending thing was ongoing for years, I can just say that. So whatever happened in FY18, the budget went wrong, plain and simple. So what was the cause of the deficit? Who bears responsibility, accountability for the deficit? And I think those questions, I hopefully, are already answered in the city council's minds, because if you can't answer those questions, there's no real solution or means to prevent it from happening again. So lastly, the move to permanently remove the requirement to seek voter approval for borrowing greater than $4 million, I understand the predicament that if you need voter approval, you may not get voter approval. So that being said, I understand it has to be removed, I just say, please, do not allow it to let it become a means for mismanagement of city government funds in the future, because that might be why we're here today, and I don't know, I don't know the full story. So all I say is, do what you got to do, it's the right thing, and hopefully, it never happens again. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, could you just state your name and your address, please, for the record?
I'm not here as the deputy chief, but my address is in Marblehead, I've owned property in the city of Lynn since 1979, I still own properties in the city of Lynn, so I still am a taxpayer. My name is Bill Murray. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name, Calvin, and your address.
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. I'm glad Deputy Chief Murray spoke up, because I'm in the same predicament. It's hard to support something when it's a black and white, when there's a lot of elements, and we don't get the opportunity to do a line item veto. However, there's some elements of this, I just want to echo what he said. And I guess you have to balance the budget, there's a number of reasons why it happened. What I'd like to hear through the chair from his honor is, are there any, how is this going to affect each taxpayer and the tax rate? Because we know we're going to be getting these bills over the next X years. Now, what his predecessor used to say is, at least to keep a rosy look on things, is this is being paid off, and this is going to augment it, so is it really a $14 million over two years, or is there X million that are being paid off, so we're just sliding one in? And that's kind of reassuring to taxpayers, if we could hear that, and just how it's going to affect us. It's hard to support that, and at the same time, support any move to allow anything above the $4 million limit. You know, that's giving carte blanche, a blank check, to elected officials to just say, okay, we're going to do this bond. People probably don't maybe know that up till now, it's, I guess currently, they can set any kind of bond that they want, up to $4 million, over that it goes to the voters. So what's wrong with asking the voters about that? You know? As far as the trash fee, I guess it's time has come. I just want to know who thought it would be an easy idea, an easy mechanism to figure out who to assess the fee on during the initial thinking of this. I've heard it quoted, a logistic impossibility. Well, we were all saying that upfront before this was implemented. I do appreciate, through the chair again, Counsel Lozzi's idea for an amendment for a senior discount, and I say it's 60, 60 years, I'm just suggesting that. So if you can break this up a little bit, and maybe do a one-time override of the $4 million, but have that kicked back in, in the next fiscal year, that would be great. Let's have the voters in two years have the opportunity to vote on these things again. I took some notes. Oh, and I'm glad that the two, as much as they might be needed, I'm glad that the two personnel changes are off the agenda. So I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I just want to make a quick announcement, that after the public hearing, that the solicitor, the CFO, and the mayor are going to be up here answering questions to the council. So a lot of the things that Calvin just brought up will be answered at that time. So anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address.
Joseph E. Scanlon III, 236 Parkland Avenue. Thirty-something years ago, I was in the same position you folks are in tonight, the city faced very, very similar circumstances as far as a home rule petition, near bankruptcy, finance control board, a large, I believe, a large rebate or abatement issue with the General Electric Company, and we basically came to the point where we were running out of cash. I think the mayor and the council, to be commended, you're not quite at that point now to take action, but unfortunately, in this world, one and one is two, and these problems don't go away. So they have to be faced head-on, and I think the best alternative right now is to adopt the legislation as proposed, and if you choose to amend it any which way you may need to, I think that's good too, because as we went through this before, there were amendments, there were revisions, there were concerns by the Department of Revenue and the Department of Administration and Finance. These things happen, it's a process, it's a home rule petition. Unfortunately, no one ever likes what the end result is going to be. You folks have to deal with the trash fee, all we had to do was turn over the assessors' department out of the hands of the city council and into the mayor, and more oversight by the Department of Revenue. You don't have that luxury now, but 30 years ago, we did manage to kick the can down the road, and I hope I'm not here in another 30 years to see it kicked again, so good luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. President, members of the council, Paul Crowley, 86 Holyoke Street. I came here not knowing for sure how I was going to stand on this issue, because I was concerned about the effect of having kind of a blank checkbook. But after hearing the mayor's comments, and his interest in not only fixing the finances on a revenue basis, but also taking considerable action to consolidate departments, bring in qualified people, I've changed my view, I think that this is the right move for the city. And we'd just ask one thing with respect to the trash fee exemption, and that you take the time to decide what is an elderly person, you know, what constitutes elderly. In my field, we consider anybody 60 and over to be elderly. But I also want to point out that being 60 and elderly, well, it's certainly reason to give this exemption, there are others that might benefit from it as well, or, said another way, who might be in a difficult position to pay for this, people who have certain incomes, people who are under age 60 with disabilities. I think you really need to take a good, hard look at who you want to protect from the increases that this is going to present. So I just ask that you think about that and come up with the number, I'd be glad to give you some information about our statistics and so forth when you go forward, but all in all, I think this is a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
My name's Barney Pilch, I live at Stonewood Lane. I guess I'm the only one opposed, but here I am, taxpayer, being nickel and dimed. So I want to talk about the trash fee. The trash fee they're saying they're implementing to be $90 per homeowner, but then I see coming down the line, oh, well, we got to increase it 10 more dollars, and we're going to increase it 10 more dollars, and here we'll be paying $120 like the ballooned fee was, you know, was supposed to be. And I'm against the taking the voters' rights out of...
Childs.
Yeah, as far as taking them out of being able to vote for an increase in extra funding. And also, as far as the budget, against that, because if you can't pay your bills, my family, we don't take out loans to pay our bills. So I think they, you know, I don't know the ins and outs, but my family does not take out loans to pay bills, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address.
Hi there. Peter Grock, 6th Maryana Street. Just like what Joe Scanlon said, we're kicking the same can down the street. 1981, my stepfather got laid off, he was a custodian, because of budgetary issues. '84, budgetary issues. Now it's '18, and the city of Lynn doesn't have any money to pay its bills. Why? Where is the return on the homeowner's investment in this city? Where? Seriously? You know, we're going to deal with drugs, we're going to deal with all the ills of an inner city. I live on 6th Maryana Street, okay? It's not a good place to raise a family. Now, what about the trash fee? You know, I am not elderly, but I don't want to be nickled and dimed to pay for a trash fee. I take care of my own trash. I don't put one green barrel out. When is enough enough? When is enough enough, everybody? Take the political courage, take the political courage, and cut the fat in this government. This government is riddled with fat. When I was a custodian over on the city side, we had one boss for 181 custodians. ISD, they got five bosses for 52 custodians. Where's the savings on that money? I am sorry, I am frustrated. 1980, 90, 2018, we're still talking about the city of Lynn not having money. Why? It's not the current mayor's fault. Come on, guys, the taxpayers in this city deserve better. We're tired of it. It's enough. Get the political courage, and you know what I say? Say no. State receivership. I want the state to come down, I want the state to come down, and I want them to open up the books in this city. You know why? Everybody's afraid of the corruption, of the corruption that goes on. Lastly, lastly, I have an article from Brendan Creighton, he went to Classical High School, and he spoke to the history class at Classical High School. These are the future of Lynn. What Lynn are we going to leave for the future of our kids? I got 16 and 18-year-old kids who don't want to live in Lynn, because they live on Maryana Street. They don't want to live in Lynn. And you know what the kids at Classical High School said? We don't want to live in Lynn because there's nothing for us in Lynn. There's no movie theaters, there's no bowling alleys, and there's going to be no more hospital because you guys don't get the political courage to do your job. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address, sir.
Michael Fannin, 7th Ontario Street. I don't know if we'd be called opposition, no one would argue that the city's in financial trouble, that we need to figure it out, fix it. My opposition is to the portion of it that talks about being able to bypass the voters on a bond above $4 million. Last year, we had a vote on the school, which was overwhelmingly rejected, and it's kind of disingenuous to think that when the next school vote comes up, that it's not going to be a factor. So I would just say, think long and hard before you take the voice away from the people that are going to be footing the bill. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else seeing...
Good evening, councilors. Excuse me, my name's Rick Wood, I live at 52 Pendexah Street, and I'm speaking for myself tonight. And, you know, it's a complicated issue, they're complicated times, but as a businessman, my take on it, and I think it echoes some of the sentiments that I heard earlier, is when you don't have enough money to pay your bills, you don't take out a loan. And what disappoints me, what disappoints me is that there's not some kind of compromise, like, so is it a 5% budget shortfall there, but why don't we split that in half? Why don't we ask each department to take half of that percentage cut and borrow half of it at least? I know the mayor's making a great effort to try to fund this in the future, but if we're not, we don't have enough revenue to pay our bills now, I don't see how taking a loan out is going to, it's a short-term, it's a kick-the-can-down-the-road solution, and that's what we've been doing as a society for many years. One of my big frustrations is the unsustainable pension programs that we have for, you know, all public workers. I feel like we should have new employees go onto a 401K base system, at least to be a light at the end of the tunnel, but the system that we have now, we pay so much, and Lynn is so underfunded in the pension system payments, I just, it's just disappointing to see us taking out a loan to pay for our cost of living, and we can't afford what we're doing now, and so it's frustrating, and also deep frustration in taking away, the voters say, I don't know how many other communities don't do it, but it's just very frustrating to take the save away from the voters to bypass the special election on that. So I know everyone's in a tough position... So I know everyone's in a tough position, but I think, you know, I hear the comment that it's very difficult to make this decision to take out a loan, basically. But I think the more difficult decision is to try to live within your means. And that's what the business community does. When a business is, does not have enough money, does not have enough revenue, they make cuts. And so government is in a different realm, I guess, and so they can tax us. And that's what's going to happen. And I feel bad for the homeowners in Lynn who live on a fixed budget, and their taxes are going to go up because we couldn't manage to live within our means. So thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Hold on, Jeff. There's someone at the podium.
Good evening. My name is Peter McKenna. I live on York Road. I'm currently against the petition until the city fully implements significant changes to put the city on a fiscally responsible path. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bernie Lidner, 302 Lidwin Street. First of all, per capita income for the city of Lynn is proxy bill for workers, forty-eight to fifty thousand a year. I know up until about six years ago, the Item Use Stories put the salaries of the city employees in the paper, but I know they've stopped now. I'm just curious as, I don't know why, but how many of these employees are eighty, hundred, hundred and twenty, hundred and forty thousand, and how many are there? Are they all needed? Maybe they are. I don't know. A while back, the city took seventy-five thousand dollars from the state during a financial check, whatever you want to call it, a study of the Lynn's finances. They gave numerous, I saw the meeting, they gave numerous recommendations, a certain amount of layoffs, they even noted where the layoff should be. Nothing was done. And there were none for the police and fire, which I don't think there should be. And as the other gentleman had said a few minutes ago, I think there should be, maybe ask each department, maybe see what they could do to cut something. Maybe some really can't, but I'm sure there are some that can. As we know, property values have gone up, and we know the city is going to tax us at two and a half of, obviously, however much it's gone up. Besides that, we also know that we're looking at two middle schools. We know about what that's going to cost us. That's coming right up too, somewhere. And then, of course, who are mandated by the feds for a hundred-plus million for the separation of the water and sewer. Hearing the mayor, I was, when I first was against it, I wasn't liking the idea that they were overriding two and a half with the four million. Something that he said, I didn't think about it yet. I'd say it's fifty thousand because you can't, you'd have to put it out to vote, and I think pretty much we all know it wouldn't have passed. If the schools didn't pass, this thing wouldn't pass. The rubbish. Well, it always seems to be this way. When you get a tax, which that's a tax, whatever you want to call it, as of January first of 20, you can go up 20 percent. If it does, that's a hundred and eight. Do two more years to 22, it's 129.60. Go to 24, it's 155. So in six years, it could be a hundred and fifty-five dollars per year. That's on the rubbish. If you compare the city with private jobs, private people, private jobs, they lay off all the time. People that get laid off, they're hurting, of course. Private, the owners, the businesses, it doesn't really hurt them. They're saving money. If the city had layoffs, yeah, the people would be hurting, but it would also decrease or help thousands and thousands of taxpayers. And that's about all I got. Thank you.
Yes, Jeffrey Avraki off of 500 Essex Street, apartment number 16, Lynn, Massachusetts. So two things. One is, as far as that, it's kind of not really against an increase in the rubbish fee, but just all of us here, right? What are we really going to do? I heard him mention it a little bit, that fellow that was in facilities for the schools or whatever, right? Every one of us, you know something? If you looked at the amount that we consume and throw out every year, all the money in the world is not going to correct that until we, you know, realize what we're talking about. We're talking about a world where people, right, all of us girls and boys, we just finish with the products, and unless we reutilize them, out they go, and God knows where they go from there. Thousands of millions of pounds get dumped over every day in the ocean. Another hundred billion pounds get dumped in a landfill and mowed over, and a lot of it's not even mulchable anymore. So if we want really be real realistic, all of you, and talk about a healthy future, I hope you're willing to accept that we have a responsibility that's not a money one. It's a deity one, D-E-I-T-Y, the one that we have to pay God. And if we don't get real about it, all of us, we're going to be in big trouble someday. And don't forget what they said about Google, about that we can't throw it up that way and say, catch you later. This is our planet that God gave us, our terra firma. So that's that. And real quickly, one more thing. I know that the girls brought a whole bunch of guys out tonight, and they've been here before, you know, to work on different things. So I appreciate that they came. But I would ask those guys the next time to please appreciate that they're spending their time to bring them up here, to support whatever we're working on, and to really, you know, respect it like they have been. And tonight, a little bit louder, but it wasn't from the girls. Those guys, if those girls are willing to bring you up to these meetings to do some beautiful work, could you please respect us all a little bit more, and the girls caring that much, and be extra, extra sensitive the next time when you hear, so that we don't have to have anybody putting a hand down on a table? We got your message, and it was a very beautiful one, but you don't need the noise to go with it. And that's not why the girls brought you here.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else?
Duncan Maitland, 41 Lynn Shore Drive. I just don't understand how the city of Lynn can go forward as far as with what they have in mind to do, as far as the deficit of millions of dollars that we've gotten ourselves into somehow. I don't think we even know how we did it, let alone how it should be corrected by not borrowing a tremendous amount of money. Where is there a freeze as far as hiring? I haven't heard anything about a freeze. We say we can't lay people off because it's going to cost us more money than if we don't lay people off. We need to tighten what we're spending. And I have not heard anything that tells me we are doing that. Have you? I think it's about time that the regular taxpayer be included in whatever negotiations are going on in the back room as far as trying to overcome something that we don't even know how it happened. The taxpayer is important. The taxpayer supposedly pays the bill. And we're borrowing on the money that supposedly eventually has to come to make up not only the deficit, but the millions of dollars that we're borrowing. Is the state of Massachusetts going to step in and fund the city of Lynn? I don't think so. We need to tighten what we're doing. We need to be serious as far as what we're doing. And I don't think that's happening, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else?
Hi, Mr. President, federal council, city officials, friends and neighbors. I'm not here to speak directly in opposition.
Tasso, could you just say your name and your address?
Tasso Nicolaopoulos, 19 Bridle Path Road, also a commercial space on 111 Western Avenue. I'm not here tonight to speak in opposition because you inherited a very, very major deficit. And you're all going to be, I'm not envious of your position because you all have to make a really tough decision tonight, and that's to balance the budget. The mayor tonight spoke about many factors why we're here tonight. And Mr. Duncan, also, I want to echo what he said. Why did we get here tonight? And that's what the residents want to hear themselves. Okay, we're going to bail you out this time. Are we coming back here in two years? Are we coming back here in four years again? Because the question we want answered is, how did we get here tonight? And the Department of Revenue made some recommendations of those key positions that we need to hire. And yes, I fully appreciate that because that is right. We need to focus on some key positions in this city that are actually missing. And one of those factors, a major factor that I think, and I believe in, a key position that the city doesn't have is a city planner. Why? We have the fire department here that's been running at bare minimum. We have the police department that's been running at bare minimum. We have two new schools that we can't build. And reason, there's millions of dollars on that, on the Linway that is underdeveloped sitting there for over a decade. Some of you are new, you just inherited that, but some of you have been here for over a decade. And you have not challenged the economic plan of this city going forward. You have not. The biggest recommendations made by the biggest studies that have done this city, the number one position they say is a city planner. A city planner. If we can make that recommendation, if we can put a line item in it, this is an opportunity for the city to really go forward. If we're talking about seriously moving forward, that key position that we're talking about, a city planner, will bring millions of dollars in the city, millions, and we wouldn't have a deficit. And that's not just me saying it. These are professionals and the studies that have been done in this city for the last 10 years. This has been coming for a long time. It's here. I'm glad that this mayor is moving, taking a step forward to fix the problem, but we need to address the major issues in this city, and that's hiring key officials and create a grant-writing system that can generate revenue. And I've said that during the campaign, and I looked at you guys in the eyes. We got to stop being creative on how to generate taxes in the city. Time to stop being creative on how to generate revenue in the city. Thank you.
Hi, Joanne Lindner, 302 Lindwood Street, Lynn. So I understand what's going on here. I guess I have a question about circumventing the city charter. So does this mean that going forward, you will never have to ask the taxpayers again for a bond? I'm hoping that during the discussion that these questions will be answered. I also wonder about, oh, well, I guess one point would be that moving forward, we live by the city charter. If you want to circumvent it, why not appoint a charter commission and change some of those integrated rules and regulations that you don't seem to want to live by? And I also agree with everybody, I don't live, I don't pay my mortgage with a credit card. I am very disappointed that this is the approach the city has taken in regards to this deficit. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, I'm Greg Haas, 130 Bickford Street. I agree with what's been said, so the one thing I don't really hear is any accountability. Everyone here is just saying, I don't really know, I don't see any real solutions. I just see the simple answer is just basically raise, you know, raise the fees, raise the taxes. I don't see anyone asking for a forensic audit. There's just, there's just, everyone is just saying, let's go the easy way and figure it out later. And I guess what's been said is, we've already been here before, and we're back in the same situation. We don't have an answer. Let's do the simple thing and figure it out later. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion made to approve.
Seconded.
Seconded. We're going to have a discussion. I'm going to ask the vice president to take the podium, please. I'm also going to ask the mayor, the CFO, and our elected solicitors to come up and sit and answer questions that the council may have. Thank you. First of all...
Chair recognizes council chair.
Thank you, Mr. President, Vice President. First of all, I just want to acknowledge to everyone for coming here tonight and say thank you. No counselor wants to be put in the position that we're being put into tonight. And some of the things that were said here in opposition about accountability, I'm taking responsibility. I've been here the last 10 or so years, and I agree with you. And some of the things that we're doing to fix the problem is that the council will be a lot more involved in the budget, working with the mayor. And I want to thank the mayor for getting the council more involved. We haven't been involved in the city budget in the past.
Excuse me, council chair, could you speak into the microphone now where everybody can hear?
Thank you. The audience tonight and the voters of Lynn watching are going to find out exactly how we got into the situation we got into and what we're going to do about it. I'm going to make a couple of, ask for a couple of amendments to be made. I'm going to read them, and then I'm going to ask the city clerk to read them out also. I am proposing a series of amendments. These amendments include clerical and editorial comments submitted by the Department of Revenue and the Division of Administration and Finance. The amendments also include the creation of a fiscal stability officer who will make recommendations to the mayor and city council on any proposed expenditures, but will be advisory in nature only. The creation of the FSO was done at the assistance of the governor. This was after a meeting with the governor. The amendment reduces the amount to be borrowed from 16 million to 14 million dollars. The amendment includes the elimination of the council budgetary officer, as well as the promotion of the head of the city council to a level-one department head. The amendment will also follow for a forty-dollar abatement in the trash fee for any person who is 69 years or older. Counselor Lozey asked me to put that in. He's very concerned about the seniors in the city. The amendment will also allow the commissioner of the Department of Public Works to establish equitable rules relating to condominium collection, where a condominium complex may have both public and private collection. The amendment also allows the law department to make clerical corrections received by the state and are not of substance prior to the submission of this act to the state. With these amendments, I respectfully ask city clerk Janet Rowe to read my proposed amendments into the record. I need a second.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Want a roll call on that?
Oh, you've got to read them in, right?
The amendment, the preamble to the...
The amendment, the preamble to the bill shall read as follows. Voter to petition the general court to the end that legislation be adopted. The general court is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. Section 1A, first sentence of the act, shall now read. Section 1A, notwithstanding any general or special law, city charter provision or local ordinance to the contrary, the city of Lynn with the approval of the director of accounts in the Department of Revenue may borrow sums as approved by the city council and the director to achieve a balanced budget for fiscal years 2018 and 19 provided. However, that the aggregate of all sums shall not exceed 12 million dollars unless the director of accounts makes a separate finding that up to an additional 2 million is necessary for the city to achieve a balanced budget in either fiscal year, in which case the aggregate of all sums shall not exceed 14 million. Section 2A, first sentence of the act, shall now read. Section 2A, with respect to fiscal 2018 and in any other year in which bonds or notes authorized under this act remain outstanding, not later than 10 days after the adoption of the city budget or July 1st, whichever is earlier, the chief financial officer shall submit to the director of accounts in the Department of Revenue a proformed tax rate recapitulation for the following fiscal year, together with a copy of the adopted budget and such supporting revenue and expenditure information as the director may prescribe. Section 2B, first sentence of the act, shall now read. In any year during which bonds or notes authorized under this act remain outstanding, the commissioner of revenue shall not certify the annual tax rate of the city of Lynn until an audit report for the preceding fiscal year has been received and accepted by the director. Section 2C, first sentence of the act, shall now read. In any year during which bonds or notes authorized under this act remain outstanding, the city shall submit to the director quarterly reports presenting a budget to actual comparison of revenues and expenditures. Section 2D of the act shall now read. In any year during which bonds or notes authorized by this act remain outstanding, the city shall not issue any bond note or other form of indebtedness without written notification to the reapproval of the director. Section 2E of the act shall now read. In any year during which bonds or notes authorized by this act remain outstanding, the city shall submit to the director a balance sheet and have its free cash certified prior to the setting of the annual tax rate. Section 2F of the act shall now read. In any year in which bonds or notes authorized under this act remain outstanding, and there is no fiscal stability officer under section 7, the director may waive any reporting, filing, or approval requirements contained in this section if the director determines it's appropriate to effectuate the purposes of this act. Section 4C of the act, strike the last sentence. Section 4D of the act shall read. In any year during which bonds or notes authorized under this act remain outstanding, the amount required to be raised for such supplemental reserve fund may be reduced by the amount, if any, remaining in the supplemental reserve fund established for the preceding year after all expenditures have been made from that fund as authorized in this act. And this remaining amount shall be retained in such supplemental reserve fund provided for the then fiscal year. Section 4E of the act shall now read. Transfers or expenditures may be made from the supplemental reserve fund of any fiscal year during that fiscal year only, and then only by city council upon the written request of the mayor. Each such transfer or expenditure requested by the mayor shall be accompanied by a written statement detailing the amount and the reasons for the transfer or expenditure. In any year during which bonds or notes authorized under this act remain outstanding, except for such transfers or expenditures as are authorized in this act, there shall be no other transfers or reductions in the amount of this fund. Provided, however, at the end of this fiscal year, the bonds or notes authorized under this act have been paid or completed, any funds remaining in the reserve fund shall be available for appropriation for any legal purpose. Section 4F of the act shall now read. In any year in which bonds or notes authorized under this act remain outstanding, and there is no fiscal stability officer under section 7, the director may waive in whole or in part the requirements of this section if the director determines it appropriate to effectuate the purposes of this act. Section 7 of the act may be stricken and its place inserted the following. Section 7. A, within 30 days of the effecture date of this act, the secretary of administration and finance herein after the secretary shall appoint a fiscal stability officer for the city of Lynn to advise the city government as it manages the city's fiscal challenges. The stability officer shall: 1. Recommend to the mayor, city council, school committee sound fiscal policies; 2. Advise the city financial officer assesses, comptroller, treasurer, collector, purchasing agent, and employees perform as similar duties but with different titles; 3. Provide assistance in all matters related to municipal financial affairs, including the school department; 4. Assist in development and preparation of all department budgets and spending plans; 5. Validate and report on the value of all proposed contracts and obligations with a term in excess of one year, except for contracts executed under chapter 150E; 6. Provide an overview of an annual budget proposal submitted by the mayor; 7. Provide an overview on the final budget as approved by the city council, including any appropriation necessary to support a collective bargaining agreement executed under chapter 150E; 8. Provide an overview of any supplemental budget submitted to the city council, including any supplemental budget requests necessary to support a collective bargaining agreement executed under chapter 150E; 9. Be informed and opine of all budget transfer requests before submission to the city council or school committee, including any budget transfer requests necessary to support a collective bargaining agreement executed under chapter 150E; 10. Decide whether to waive the reporting requirements contained in section 2 or the supplemental reserve fund requirements contained in section 4. 11. Opine on any proposed free cash overlay surplus or any other one-time revenues as determined by the stability officer; and 12. Report quarterly to the secretary and house and senate committees on ways and means on the progress made towards reducing the city's capital and structural deficits. B. If recommended by the fiscal stability officer and if contract cost does not exceed $100,000, the city shall bear the cost of any consultant retained by the city to perform on its behalf. C. Within 180 days of the effecture date of this act, the city shall develop and submit to the city council a five-year capital plan. The fiscal stability officer shall provide a written review of the proposed capital plan. D. Each year, the mayor shall submit, along with an annual budget proposal, a multi-year revenue and expenditure forecast. Said forecast shall be reviewed by the fiscal stability officer prior to submission. Section 8 of the act shall be stricken and its place inserted the following. Section 8. At any time after July 1st, 2020, and while debt issued under this act is outstanding, if the secretary and the secretary's sole discretion determines that the city has taken steps necessary to achieve long-term fiscal sustainability and no longer requires active state oversight, the secretary may abolish the stability officer. Section 18, first sentence of the act, shall now read. Section 18. Notwithstanding with the provisions of chapter 8 of the acts and resolves of 1985, the city of Lynn may consolidate the positions of treasurer and collector at its discretion by ordinance whenever a vacancy shall occur in one or both of said positions. Section 20B shall now read. The initial fee shall be limited to $90 per calendar year for residential commercial unit. The fee shall be billed on a biannual basis by the city of Lynn. The commissioner of the Department of Public Works shall have the authority to increase said fees every other year beginning on January 1st, 2020. However, in no event shall the fee be increased more than 20% of the prior year's fee. Section 20F is hereby deleted and replaced with the following. The commissioner of the Department of Public Works is hereby authorized to make rules and regulations relating to condominium units which utilize both municipal and private waste and refuse collection based upon the amount of trash and solid waste collected at the condominium complex. Section 20G shall be added in states as followed. Any person 69 years of age or older residing in an owner-occupied residence shall be entitled to a $40 abatement on the trash fee. Such person 69 years age or older residing in an owner-occupied dwelling shall present satisfactory evidence demonstrating that he or she qualifies for the abatement to the commissioner of the Department of Public Works. Said satisfactory evidence shall include, but is not limited to, a deed, a driver's license, birth certificate, and a utility bill in the owner occupied's name. The commissioner of the Department of Public Works is hereby authorized to enact rules and regulations for the administration of processing abatements. Section 21 is hereby deleted in its entirety and shall be replaced by the following words. The city solicitor's office is hereby authorized to make clerical and editorial edits only to conform with any suggestions, clerical, stylistic, and formatting in nature, to conform with the suggestions of council for the senate and the house received prior to the act's submission to the state for further action. Section 22 shall now be labeled section 21, and finally, section 23 shall now be labeled as section 22.
A motion is made on the amendment, it has been seconded, discussion, Council of Barton.
Mr. President, anybody at the table could answer this question. Mr. President, you mentioned that our Counselor Lozey, you know, was in favor of the elderly and the trash fee. Well, I think talking to every counselor here, they were in favor of that also. And I'd like to know, if you could tell the audience, why we come up with that number, 69? Anybody at the table?
I think, you know, Jim or Peter could answer that.
Well, I think the original proposal was to exempt those people that qualify for statutory exemptions as a senior, which would kick in at 70 years old. And there was then also further discussion about other options. I think that's what set the parameter. I had no discussions with Counselor Lozey on his proposal, so I can't comment on that, but I did, there was suggestions even from the beginning that there'd be some sort of component in it for elderly, for seniors.
Attorney Lamont, could you give a better?
Would we run the number 65, they would probably lose a quarter, a quarter of a million dollars additionally in revenues to the city, and this $14 million is built in, assuming we're gonna get the whole 2.5. Even at 69, we're gonna lose probably somewhere around $150,000, $180,000 in revenues.
Thank you.
Counselor Walsh.
So, is there a number that we have to achieve with the trash fee? What are we shooting for that we need to hit?
Well, I think, you know, obviously, the council, in its wisdom, can impose any kind of exemption that it feels appropriate. My concern is that the proposal is built on $2.4 million of revenue from the trash fee in order to, you know, that was, the parameters of the proposal that were discussed with the state assumed $2.4 million. Clearly, with this proposal, that number on an annual basis is probably dropping down something, somewhere close to $2.1 million. Council has to be aware, unless they make up that revenue elsewhere, that they are putting pressure on the FY '20 budget, because we would be losing approximately, roughly $150,000 in fiscal '18, $300,000 in fiscal '19, and another $300,000 in fiscal '20 with this proposal in place. So unless the council is prepared to make adjustments to reductions in the budget somewhere down the line to offset those, that lost revenue, then, you know, they just have to be aware that there are ramifications for reducing the amount of revenue to be realized.
Is there an opportunity to cap the trash fee at some point at a certain date? Like if the bond has been reached and paid back, that's, is there an opportunity to cap that out at a certain date?
That would require going back to a home rule petition. As written, generally accepted, that for the life of this loan, which is 10 years, this trash fee will probably need it. But if we get to a point where we don't have a fiscal stability officer, and we're back on our feet, nothing prevents this council and the mayor to petition the senate and the legislature and the governor to eliminate the trash fee in its entirety. But for the short term, this will be a vital tool in balancing the budget.
Thank you.
Counselor Lozey. Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate you mentioning my desire to protect seniors in this, and I also agree with Counselor Barton, that I know all of my colleagues share the same sentiments, that we care about our seniors in this city, and at the same time, we're looking at these numbers that if we, I would very much like to see a younger age in the exemption. And as Mr. Karen said, I think we would have the ability to revisit this and possibly lower that age if we find that the revenues created by this trash fee allow us to do that, as well as hopefully capping it or eliminating it once this bond is addressed, hopefully in 10 years.
Yeah. The other comment I would just want to make is, I just want to make clear that if, well, we just want to make clarification between a bond order in general and the bond order that was put before the vote is for the two middle schools. Any bond order, including the bailout bond, and any bond that would be approved by the city council, assuming that they eliminated, although eliminated the $4 million voter approval, would not increase taxes for any taxpayer in the city. Those revenues would have to be made, those costs would have to be absorbed within the current revenue structure of the city. In other words, if the, just to give you an example, if the city were to borrow the entire $14 million over the next two years, that would result in about $1.55 billion in annual cost to pay that back. That is not money that is added to anyone's tax bill. That is money that has to be absorbed within the city budget each of those 10 years. I'd say that to draw the distinction between that and the vote that was taken on the middle schools. In the middle schools, that vote was for a debt exclusion. A debt exclusion must always go before the taxpayers. In other words, if the bond is to increase taxes, that requires voter approval regardless. That would not change with the proposal that's before the elimination of the $4 million bond limit that's proposed in the bailout bill right now. So I just want to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Counselor Lozey. And, Mr. President, just to make clear, we're discussing those amendments that you proffered earlier. We're not actually, we're not gonna be taking a vote on the actual amendment yet. We're just working on... Okay, so we'll keep our questions to those amendments then. Okay, thank you. Counselor Capone.
I have a question. So, like the rest of the councils here, everyone, I think, favors the elderly amendment. The question I have is this, because last year, we passed a trash fee, and we went through, you know, a lot of discussion, debate. It wasn't easy. Nobody wanted to do it, sort of what we're doing right now. And the trash fee bill never went out, you know, and it's apparent, you know, from what I hear, that that would have been $2 million that we had, and the reason why we didn't do it, it was too hard to do. I just want to know that this, if we do pass elderly exemption or waiver, you know, as proposed in the amendment here, or reduction in fee, that we will be able to do that, that it will happen, you know, that, you know. I'm saying that because I, as much as I realize, and I appreciate the inclusion of the councils from the mayor, I mean, this, I've never felt more included in any discussion with the budget. I mean, we've, we've had meetings, you've been very communicative. I actually feel like I understand, and I'm not as confused as I was previously because of the competing ideas and contradicting opinions about what was happening. I do appreciate that, but I do want to know that if we pass something here, that it will happen.
My understanding, speaking to the commissioner of the Department of Public Works, so long as it's not any amendments to this, and some of the amendments at the last, with family members, made it very difficult for the DPW with their current personnel levels to collect this money. They understand there'll be a rash of individuals coming in with birth certificates and a deed. That is something that DPW, while they'll be inundated for the first month when these bills get out, they will be able to handle, rather than trying to determine, are you a brother, or your sister, or your mother, or your father? Does the landlord live in Lynn, or does the landlord live in Malden? And looking at documentation to try to figure out residency, being in charge of enforcing residency for employees, I know how difficult it is just for the 600 employees for the city to look at every landlord in the city for a DPW. Clerical staff, amongst everything they have to do, made it, from an administrative standpoint, probably impossible without hiring employees. This is much more manageable.
I would, I would agree with that. The primary stumbling block with the previous ordinance was the residency issue and the, you know, relatives living in the property, where it's not the age and determination of ownership is not an issue in this particular version, which would make it pretty easy. Everyone, everyone is assumed to pay the fee unless they can show that they exempted Everyone, everyone is assumed to pay the fee unless they can show that they exempted otherwise. We're not making determinations as to where people live, and that will simplify the matter quite a bit.
Do you have a follow-up, Councilor Capano?
Yeah, well, I, I, I don't want to get off of the amendments if we're going to have a follow-up with the proposal itself, so I will wait, you know.
Okay. Councilor Net.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure, I just want to follow Councilor Capano. Somehow, we have pretty much the same question. If I understand correctly, when we passed the trust earning for the absentee landlord last year, we, we knew exactly who, I mean, which landlord lived out of the city. And I, I believe we can exempt the senior if we go back to start the charter, the original amendment that we put the charter absentee landlord. I don't know if it's possible we can do that. I'm not sure if I hear Councilor Capano mentioning this, but this is my recommendation. If we can do that, would be great. If not, then I need to, I have to know why we cannot do it.
Well, I think, for example, there are a number of landlords that have Lynn addresses in the city of Lynn, but they live outside of the city of Lynn. That makes it problematic that to determine which ones do live in Lynn or don't live in Lynn, you know, so that was part of the problem that we had a lot of issues with. And then the other thing was the uncertainty of determining how many units would, you know, would be occupied by non, by relatives of the owner. I think the problem was, we had no certainty of what the revenue was. Yes, it was two million dollars, but then the council added a number of amendments to that. And believe me, most of this work was done in the assessors' office, which isn't even our responsibility, but it was done in the assessors' office. And I had one of the assessors, Chris Gator, in my office, spent weeks trying to shuffle through this stuff, and literally four, five hours a day. And in the end, we still had a lot of uncertainty as to which units would be taxed and which ones wouldn't, which ones would be taxed as resident, Lynn residents, which ones would be taxed as out-of-town residents. There was a great deal of burden, and there was a great deal of uncertainty, and there would have been a great deal of confusion and problems at the DPW trying to make heads or tails of all that. This is going to be much simpler in the sense that every, there'll be, everyone will pay a bill, it's just a question of how much at that point.
So the answer is that it's impossible for us to go back to the, I mean, to go back to the way we passed last year. So just go straight to ninety dollars per unit.
As written, this amendment would repeal any inconsistent ordinances, and there would be an inconsistency between this ordinance and what was passed previously that's been determined to be unworkable. I believe the chief financial officer could explain a bit about how difficult it was to identify commercial places that were being picked up, because oftentimes, waste management will pick up on the city's dime and their own dime. So there was no master list of commercial properties.
Yeah, that problem still exists today, but in discussions with the DPW director, we should be able to resolve those with the cooperation of waste management and identifying which accounts they have. Part of the problem with the commercial properties is that there are individual accounts, is that there are individual accounts with, for different sect, different business owners, except there are multiple businesses in one building. And the, the idea here is the ordinance provides that it's the owner of the property that gets the bill. So, I mean, it's conceivable we have situations where we have five retail businesses in the same strip, and two or three may be paying, being picked up on the city's dime, and the other two are being picked up on waste management's dime. You know, we can't be assessing the property owner for five pickups at that location, we can only be assessing them for three. So we got to identify which ones which in those type of multi-tenanted property, commercial properties.
Councilor Staben.
To your point, Mr. Karen, I don't think that there's any business in the city that should be using the same colored barrels as a, as a residence, number one, and that would be one way around that, that waste management doesn't pick up a green barrel at a business. If it's a business, it should be red, blue, or whatever, and that business should be on the hook for their own trash disposal fees. If we vote on, on this amendment here, does that close the door on future amendments this evening?
Can add more amendments, but we're voting on this amendment right now.
Okay, then I'll hold my comments until after we take this.
I got a question.
Hold on, Councilor, Councilor Jacobus.
I have one question. If this was not to pass tonight, what would we be charging for a trash fee if this doesn't happen?
If the state came in?
Yeah, yes.
That, that would be up to the state, but the mayor was accurate in his assessments. The problem, if we don't do this, we're short two, of one-point-two million dollars in, for FY eighteen, and two-point-four million dollars for FY fourteen, for nineteen, excuse me, yes. You know, you're talking, you know, if, I think, roughly a hundred thousand, I mean, a hundred employees would have to be laid off just to make up the lost revenue, or the council would have to come up with some other revenue source. The problem we face is that there are no revenue sources that are out there that are readily tap, you know, available in the, in our budget structure. So it, it's sort of not, not where we wanted to go, but it was the only place we had to go.
Councilor Lozey. Thank you, Mr. President. I've heard from many constituents, and we heard from a lot of people tonight, both for and against, and we heard very reasoned arguments, and a lot of questions, I think, that I've had, and I know that you, my colleagues, have had as well. And one area of concern was just fiscal responsibility and sustainability. And I, I know the mayor touched on it earlier in, in his talk, and I, I don't want to put you on the spot, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to ask you, though, because you do have a good handle on this, where you've been speaking with the Secretary of Finance, and I'm looking at this amendment, these additions, specifically Sections seven and eight, of, these are pretty much address the concerns, I think we've heard from many of the people here tonight. What is the city doing to ensure that we're not going to stay in this mess, or that it won't happen again? And I think that this does address it, but I would like to just hear you explain how that's going to happen, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'd like to, you know, there's a lot of good, great questions. People are concerned about borrowing the money, and then where are we at? Two weeks into the, two weeks into my administration, I had a department head meeting of all department heads, and asked them to create a budget that we've already had, have received in my office, that we'll be starting to work on within the next week or two, which I think is well, well earlier than what has been, gone on much in the past. So that was the first, two weeks in, met with the department heads, asked them to create a budget for next year. We're working with them, we're going to be meeting with them over the next month or two to go through that and really establish what we need to do to stabilize the budget. Secondly, we, we had a meeting, and we're going to continue to follow up with, because I know there's a question about looking at the charter and the ordinances. We have engaged the University of Mass at Boston, the Collins Center, they're experts in the field, they work on looking at, and they've done it in other communities. What does your charter look like? What is your charter? What do your ordinances, ordinances look like? What is the governance of the community? We're going to be engaging them to work with us to take a serious look at our charter, our ordinances, and how we run the city, so that we can take a look at, at what's going on, and how we can make sure that this doesn't happen again. So we have been taking action moving forward. And I just want to go through this, because I think it's important, and this is a breakdown in terms of what the requirements are here, because again, I think there were questions that were asked. I'll start in Section Two. Requires the chief financial officer to submit to Department of Revenue proof that the city has a balanced budget. Requires audit report that before annual tax rate is certified. Requires quarterly reports to the Department of Revenue. Requires approval of the Department of Revenue before the city can issue additional bonds. Requires balance sheets to be submitted before the Department of Revenue certifies free cash. If there is no fiscal stability officer in place, which is being created, then DOI has the authority to waive any reporting requirements on this section. On Section Seven, which asks the question, actually, I think it's important to talk about Section Four, because we have not had a supplemental fund in the past. We have put a million dollars aside, but we have not had a legitimate, one percent is the suggested amount we should be putting aside on a three-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar budget, that's three-point-three million a year. We've been doing one million. This, in addition to the one million, would create a supplemental reserve fund that starts at eight-hundred thousand and grows from there, so that we are actually putting money away for extraordinary unforeseen expenditures during the bond repayment period. So we're putting money aside to ensure we have money available. On Section Seven, creating a fiscal stability officer to advise Lynn, will recommend to the mayor, the city council, and the school committee, and I think it's important to note that I've had many meetings with the city council related to that, and the school committee on sound fiscal policies, advise the chief financial officer, assessors, comptroller, treasurer, collector, purchasing agent, and employees performing civil duties but with different titles. So they will be working closely with us to advise us on the actions we're taking, provide assistance in all matters related to our municipal finance affairs, including the school department, assist in development and preparation of all department budgets and spending plans. Validate and report on the value of all proposed contracts and obligations with a term in excess of one year, except for contracts executed under Chapter One-Fifty-E. Provide an overview of the annual budget proposal that's submitted to the mayor. Be informed of and opine on all budget transfer requests before submission to the city council or school committee. Decide whether to waive the requirements contained in Sections Two or Four, opine any proposed use of free cash, overlay, surplus, or any other one-time revenues as determined by the stability, the stability officer. Again, it requires the city to develop and submit, which we have not done in the past, a capital, five-year capital plan within a hundred and eighty days, so we understand what the capital costs are going to be moving forward. We have not done that in the past. This allows us to understand what our capital needs will be. Requires the mayor to submit a multi-year revenue, not just a one-year, a multi-year revenue and expenditure forecast with, with my annual budget every year. That forecast shall be reviewed by the fiscal stability officer prior to submission, who will be working closely with us to ensure that the decisions we're making are fiscally sound. So there's a lot of pieces in here, I think, that reflect some of the questions that we're hearing. So I, I do believe that working with the administration and with their guidance and oversight, as we make these decisions, and working closely with the council and the school committee, I really believe that we can address some of the concerns, balance the budget, and start to make decisions that are going to allow us to ensure that we don't have to make this, these decisions again.
And I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for going through all that. We heard the secretary read that into the record, but for you to expound on this, and I hope everyone that's listening, that they understand that the complaints we heard were valid complaints and concerns. And we are taking steps under this if it, if it passes tonight, that there's, there's a lot of oversight, a lot, comprehensive list of steps that this city needs to take to ensure that we become fiscally sustainable and responsible, and get back on a, on a balanced budget. And you also mentioned, I appreciate the fact that you mentioned earlier about the UMass looking at the charter, because that's another concern I think we all have, both the audience, people at home, you know, that we do have a charter, and we are, we are doing an override of it. And what are we going to do moving forward? You did touch on it, and I'd like you to, if you could, Mr. Mayor, elaborate a little more on, you know, the direction that, not too in-depth, I don't think we need to know all the intricacies of, you know, fifteen percent of voter signatures getting on the ballot, but the fact that we are moving to bringing the city of Lynn's charter into the modern age here, that this charter was, is fifty years old, and four million dollars fifty years ago was, was a lot of money back then, and today it's not. And the final thing I want to say is that we've, Mr. President, you mentioned, and I think some of you, my colleagues, have mentioned, this will be a very difficult vote. There's no question on that. And nobody wants to borrow to get back to a budget, balanced budget, operating costs. This is a one-time thing, and I, I'm glad that, Mr. Karen, you mentioned, you know, any, any kind of a school or new school, that would require a vote. That's not something that is being eliminated here, that there will always have to be a vote on that kind of debt. And so if you could just briefly backtrack on that charter commission, that we do need to update that charter, and I, I'd love to.
It's a great question, thank you for the question. Again, the Collins Center, and I'm happy to make the information available, have a team of, you know, people with thirty-plus years of experience in charters around the Commonwealth, legal team, city planners, there's a whole crew, and their, their expertise is in city charters, in, and looking at city ordinances, so a chance for us to look at what our charter is, identify exactly what the charter looks like, and make recommendations related to what other best practices are in other communities, both on the charter and on the ordinances, in addition to, to give us advice on city governance, and what, again, best practices are in other communities. I think that the, the reality of what we need to do is, is get the experience, get the input from others that have made decisions, who understand what other communities are doing and are doing well, and for us to then take advantage of that, that information, and working with all of you, make decisions to, on what direction to go. But I think once we get a chance to get that information in, we can then take a look at some of the suggestions and where we're at. But, so we have, you know, I, you know, we've been, I've been in eight weeks, but we've really tried to take, one, be collaborative, work together, and, but take a look at the challenges we face, and, and address, I think, many of the concerns the citizens are voicing. I don't want to be doing this, this is not an easy thing to do. I didn't run for office and say, hey, let's borrow some money and raise the, the trash fee and do all these things, but we are faced with a serious challenge, and we need to address and get our hands around it. And, and I believe this legislation allows us to do that. But just as importantly as borrowing the money is the next step, and what do we do to ensure we start to professionalize and streamline and create a twenty-first-century operation in the city of Lynn? And that's going to involve all of us working together. And I think we, we have worked to bring the people to the table to help us make some of those decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I look forward to it. Councilor Calucci. Is he all set?
I'm all set, I'm all set.
Councilor Staben.
Thank you, and again, I'm withholding my, my statements until later on down the line, but I'd like some clarification on something that Councilor Lozey brought up, because I've heard it both ways. If this were to pass tonight, and a school vote came up, well, the topic of, of a new school came up, does that go before the voters if the city can afford to pay for it under its current bond debt?
Only if the, it would be a debt exclusion. In other words, the city has very, one of the things that the Department of Revenue has stressed is that we have, we have a very low amount of debt outstanding for a city of its size. So the, the problem is, is that, well, not the problem, the, if, if the bond order is simply to build the schools within the existing budget framework and pay the bond off within our existing budget framework, there would be no increase in taxes, and there would be no vote by the taxpayers.
So the Marshall vote would not have required.
Is a different animal, because that would have required an increase in taxes over and above what their regular taxes are, on top of what they're paying now. That, that will always, under Proposition Two and a Half, require a vote of the voters before it could be implemented.
Only the debt exclusion.
The Marshall vote would not have gone to the voters, because we had sufficient monies to pay off that debt. The Pickering bond would go, because we did not have sufficient revenues to pay that off, so we would have to ask the taxpayers for an increase and have their say in whether this project was worth the tax increase or not.
So we could move forward with large projects if this were to pass without asking the will of the voter?
To the point, we are the only city in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that has this requirement. This was strongly suggested by the Department of Revenue. It's tying our hands as far as correcting crumbling schools that in often cases are over a hundred years old. Ipswich, I believe, with a town meeting format, does have something similar to this, but no other city is handcuffed with respect to the, the bond requirement.
Just as an aside to that, the reason, the reason we had to put it out to the voters for a debt exclusion was specifically for these financial problems that we're trying to address now. We would have had much, more. We would have much more difficult—it would have been much more difficult to borrow the money necessary to build those schools without the debt exclusion, simply because of the existing strain already on the budget would have made it impossible to come up with the annual repayment schedule.
Counselor Capano.
Okay. My original question was answered, but I did want to ask this. I wanted to expand on what Counselor Chakoudas, I think, was getting at when she asked about what would happen with the trash fee if the state took over. I think what we don't talk about enough is what is the alternative? Like, what would happen? We all know that we're down with the police. We need more police. Fire department is down. DPW could definitely use more people. What is the alternative? Like, if we didn't pass this, what would happen? What is a likely—no one can predict the future, I understand that, but what is a likely scenario?
I would expect the state to step in, because we wouldn't be able to meet payroll. We wouldn't be able to send out tax bills without the relief provided by the borrowing authorization. And at some point, we wouldn't have money coming in, particularly on that fourth quarter tax bill, and our ability to make payroll would cease, and probably the state would step in in order to protect public safety. In other words, to keep the cops and firemen working and DPW crews working to maintain the city, the state might very well have to step in.
And by step in, what would they do when they step in?
Some sort of maybe financial oversight board.
Well, I think—and I'm going to be a little more blunt than the CFO—
Be my guest.
Over 200 layoffs. Your trash bills across the city would go up to over $200, possibly as high as 230. You know, as Peter was just saying, the state would step in with police, state police, but you'd see city services cut, teachers laid off, city hall workers laid off.
Well, the other thing of major concern is, more than likely, they would pull in all the contracts for all the bargaining units and review those and make possibly—tear them up and draw up new ones. I mean, if the legislature gives the review board that kind of authority, that's a possibility.
What about health insurance?
They could force us to go with the GIC.
And no vote tonight would almost be a certainty of a GIC. And Lawrence, which was in much worse shape than us—it was almost—in Springfield, it was almost an insistence. They do not believe that we're as in bad a situation as Lawrence and Springfield, so they are not forcing the GIC. They're giving the mayor and the council the opportunity to try to solve this together, or the health insurance cost, which obviously is a major part of our budget. But the state would—if they took over, that would probably be one of their first actions.
Counselor Fields.
Mr. President, I think, being so far down the line, many of my questions have already been answered by the three and by yourself, Council President. During the last campaign—and I know with the two schools, I know transparency was always one of those key issues with the voters, and that was talked about tonight. It was touched upon with backdoor meetings and information that the counselors have received and back and forth with concerned residents within the city, whether it was elderly, whether it was those that are living on a fixed income. And I think, hearing the actual numbers coming from you, the mayor, and the delegation that met with the state, that the audience here and the people watching at home and the people that we've spoken to personally can hopefully be assured that there is oversight, and hopefully we can finally see that light at the end of the tunnel. And I don't think that's been evident in the past. So, I applaud for your transparency here with actual numbers and what you see as how far we can move along together as a team.
Thank you. Counselor Net.
Mr. President, I hope this $14 million we plan to borrow will cover everything. We'll cover the debt we owe, the bills we're supposed to pay, the salaries, all these things. And I hear that a lot of residents asked tonight that we hope we don't have to come back here in a third year. Two years from now, three years from now, we don't have to come back to do this all over again. Can you assure—at least tell us that this will not happen again, because $14 million, we should be able to fix everything right now. So, please let us know, because the residents want to know as well.
I think the whole purpose of this bill is to buy time. Okay? The goal is to produce a balanced budget for fiscal year 2020. That's what the state has basically charged us with, is to reduce a balanced budget and stability in 2020. What the borrowing does is buy us time. There's going to have to be a lot of structural changes. It's going to have to be a review of how the city operates, what kind of economies we can realize. One of the things that the mayor will be examining is the health insurance and a number of other things, you know, in terms of how the city operates has to be reviewed. This is not something that can be done between now and April and the problem be solved. This is something that's going to require a lot of debate and a lot of proposals coming before the council over the next year and a half, leading up to the 2020 budget. And the purpose of this whole thing was to buy us time to make those changes and to get to where we need to be in 2020.
So, in other words, that $14 million will not cover everything?
Well, the $14 million will, at a minimum, cover what we need to do to maintain our current level of staffing, for example, in the police department and fire department. Hopefully, with some economies made in health insurance and some other items that we could possibly be looking at trying to, you know, restore some of those cuts that were made over the years. The possibility of a city planner might be a possibility as we move forward in terms of, you know, making some of those economies. But the money that's proposed—I've spent quite a bit of time with the deputy commissioner of revenue going over both the '18 and the '19 budget, that the $14 million should be sufficient, at a minimum, to maintain our current level of operations. That's assuming no economies made in health insurance and no economies made in restructuring the way some departments work and looking at other economies that are able to be realized through the budget. So, there may be—we may not have—we may be in a position moving forward to go there. I think one thing that we haven't discussed is that the net school spending problem that's been hounding us for the last—since FY13, looks like it has finally been resolved. You know, for FY18, we've spent—we are well above our net school spending requirement, which should provide us relief from that final $2.2 million payment that we've had to do. In other words, we're not having to come up with the extra $2.2 million in next year's budget, because we've already budgeted enough money for the schools to wipe out that obligation for next year. So, there's a lot of positive things that are going on that are helping us move forward to, you know, reach the goal of a balanced budget for FY2020.
Correct me if I'm not mistaken. We must take a bond. We must borrow a court to the state. Is that right? We have the option not to borrow?
Well, we have the authority to borrow. Whether—I think for FY18, we need to borrow the $8.1 million. There's no doubt of that. FY19 will have—is—there's additional $6 million available there. Whether or not we need to borrow that $6 million will—something that a decision will be made over the next, I would say, five to six months, going into setting the tax rate in FY18. So, that—I think the FY19 budget and how the mayor and the city council work to craft a budget for FY19 will go a long ways to determining how much we actually have to borrow of the remaining $6 million.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Walsh.
I know it's a little off-topic, but I had a question from the audience. If people have current trash pickup at their facility, they don't use the services of the city. They're not affected by this, right?
That's correct. This is only people that have some sort of trash pickup that the city pays for through waste management.
Thank you.
They would go to the Department of Public Works with a contract with a private hauler, and that would be abated.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Upier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a follow-up on Counsel Walsh's comment. I've been getting calls around the opt-out. Is there an opt-out mechanism for folks that decline the city trash pickup?
They can simply go to—if they provide proof to the DPW that they're having—hiring a private contractor to pick up their trash or install a dumpster on the property, then they will—we will abate that trash fee for that property.
And to be clear, if—this only affects residential, commercial properties, but condominiums and things of that nature of large-scale apartment buildings are exempt from this?
There are a number of condominium complexes that do benefit from city waste pickup. That was something that was negotiated, I think, back in the '80s, when some of these complexes were first built. Most apartment buildings—any—for the most part, apartment buildings of seven or more units do not pay trash right now. The exception to that is some condominiums of that size. I think there are a limited number of those. You know, I can think of Stadium, 295, 300, Seaport have some degree of city trash pickup. That was something that was negotiated back with those property owners back then. So, that would have to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis by the DPW director to determine the degree of the city's contribution towards their trash pickup, and hopefully, he will set equitable rules in order to make sure that the assessments are fair. And I think, you know—I think there's also a question of how that will happen. Myself personally, I would not want to see individual tax bills go into individual unit owners in those properties. Maybe the better option is for the DPW director to build the condo association directly.
Property management.
Yeah, property management company, yeah.
Part of Counselor President C's amendments today were designed to address that issue. A number of people in the audience have approached some councils today, asking that question, how—I think—
Thank you. Those were too specific on the amendment. I know you're reserving—we're reserving our rights to speak about the whole home rule at a later time. Is that correct, Mr. President? Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if you want to ask a question now, Counsel, you can do that.
No, I'm more of a—I'm trying to keep my comments limited and brief, but I do want to echo some of the sentiments about my colleagues around the transparency piece. I want to commend the mayor, first of all, Mayor McGee, who's inheriting this troublesome outlook, and our council president for putting in countless hours. I don't think a lot of times, the general public—and I appreciate the comments pro and con tonight—but sometimes we don't realize just how much hours this does take and the time to work around the state government as well, because this is—I think Counsel Field said it best—we're working as a team, and we're a piece of the team at both the state level and even up to the governor's office. So, we're just trying to do what's right. And I think you folks, under your leadership, you have been very communicative to this body. You've been very prudent and very, I think, direct in the way in which you're approaching this tsunami, we might call it, because I've been here my second budget now, and having known that it was in the rear is very unsettling. And I'm happy—and I think former Counselor Crowley spoke to it—that at least we're trying to address some of the things in the Philadelphia Plan, so to call—I know that wasn't the firm that we got for free to recommend to us, some of the things we need to put in place for long term. And I'm glad to see some of the smaller things that may get overlooked in the whole grand scheme of the home rule. I know some people are picking out more of the highlights, but more of the top lines, but in that is a consolidation of departments. It's a real look at what we're doing and how we create revenue. And I really want to charge and impress upon, you know, the team up in front of us here that this is going to happen. I think it was alluded to by other folks in the audience. Lynn is only going to get stronger by way of our economic development potential going forward in 2020 and beyond. So, we've got to really impress upon our economic development team and community development, everybody working in concert with private development, to really put forth something to alleviate the residential tax base here going forward and create jobs and try and make this a stronger local economy. So, I do want to say thank you, first off, for the way that you have approached this, Mr. Mayor and Mr. President, how you've been very inclusive in listening to some of the things, because what folks are adopting, hopefully, here tonight was not where we started in this whole thing. I think there was a recognition by this body, the legislative branch of the City of Lynn, to really come to grips about how much we should be borrowing, keeping that to a minimum, not putting any frills in there, and trying to get right to the heart of the matter of stabilizing our great city once and for all, and hopefully be on the right track, that we can offer this mayor, this new mayor, you know, a clean slate and a fair opportunity to prove, you know, for the duration of future budgets, that we're heading in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Calucci?
I just wanted to say, Mr. McGee, you're doing a good job. I'm proud, and I'm happy that, you know, everybody talks about kicking the hand down the road. The can't in the sewer now. It's all over. We're going to do the right thing. We're going to move forward.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Walsh? Any more discussion? Counselor Net?
Just one last question. This is a question directly to Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate you here, and you have done a wonderful job. This is your second month, and you work with us effectively, and we appreciate. But my question is that—you have said this already, but it was not quite clear to the public. I know when the people hear that we take their rights away, they don't like that, because we are the government. And I just want you to clarify why we're in a rush to remove the requirement for the resident to vote beyond—I mean, beyond the $4 million bond. So, please explain to us, so that I need to know as well, so the resident need to know clearly. I understand that we have only about 30 days to have this done. We have to go through—we have to pass first and go to you, then go to the legislator in the State House, then go to the governor to decide. But please explain to us further, so that we—the resident feel more comfortable, and I feel more comfortable to support this petition.
I think it's been said, but we're the only city in the Commonwealth that has a cap on our borrowing, and I think it was made clear that any vote that's going to be above 2.5, the voters will have a chance to vote. If the taxes are going to be affected, the voters will have a chance to make a decision whether or not they want to make that happen, whether it be on a school, whether it be on raising taxes. That would be a vote of the public. I'll give you an example of what has been—how we're impacted. We're working to—on the hood school, we've gotten approved through the Mass School Building Assistant Authority for upgrades. You know, I'm drawing a blank on what they call it, but it's not—we're not getting a school, but we're getting the roof, we're getting the windows.
The green brand.
Accelerated repair. Thank you very much. It's a long night. So, part of that accelerated repair, we're going to get an 80% reimbursement. The cost is 5.1 million. So, we have to bond 5.1 million. We will get 4 million back once we bond the 5.1 million. For us to get the 5.1 million, we need to go to the voters to get approval to get that project approved, which would cost us $50,000 to have the election. So, we'd have the election for something that we're bonding over $4 million, but the reality is, we're only going to be bonding—the cost to the city is 1.1 million. We're getting 4 million from the state to pay for those—for that project. That's an example of how we're impacted by having this cap in place. Again, no other communities have this, I think, as Jim said. Ipswich does at a town meeting. This doesn't mean we're just going to come in and just do all kind of bonding. We're elected to make decisions for the community. We have to be responsible. And if we're not able to make the responsibility related to how we can afford the debt, then, you know, we're going to have substantial problems, and if we're going to have to go to debt exclusions or other votes that are going to impact the taxpayers, absolutely we have to have a vote. We are not taking that ability away. It's a question of making decisions on smaller amounts and other factors that other communities are able to do, and I think it's appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. Any more discussion? Now, there's a vote on the amendments. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubed?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Discussion on the home rule petition. A motion was made, seconded. Counsel Staubed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know it's been a long night. Last summer, I followed a group of, I think, every department head, by a chief, police chief, DPW commissioner, up to the podium there. As the council discussed, the non-owner occupied a multifamily trash fee. And I spoke in favor of that. And I still believe that that was the right thing to do. Multifamilies, especially non-owner multifamilies, non-owner occupied multifamily buildings are businesses. People purchase them to collect rent, generate income, they write off their costs, and they pay income taxes on the profit. It's a business. The difference between that business and a commercial business is they enjoy a residential tax rate, which is half what a commercial tax rate is in the City of Lynn. So, to ask them to contribute to trash costs at $200 a unit, I thought that was more than We haven't sent out the bills. It's been said that it's a cumbersome process to do so. That money is still owed. In this fiscal year, that money is still owed, going back to the summer. Now, we're looking to wipe that off the slate. It's not owed anymore. We're going to pass a new ordinance of $90 for everybody. So, what we're in essence doing is asking the owner-occupieds, whether it's, they reside in a multifamily, a single family, or whatever, to subsidize those other businesses. You know, we've got so many people in this city, you know, we've got so many people in our boat, but we need more people pulling on the oars. We cannot keep going back to the residential taxpayers in the city, who just got, in some cases, a 16% increase in their property tax bills because their values went up. And people can say, that's a wonderful thing. Your house is worth more money. Great. It's only good when you go to cash in. But your overall tax burden falls on your family, and you have to pay that bill. Voters just overwhelmingly rejected a $200 a year tax increase for something really tangible, two brand-new middle schools that we desperately need. They're at their wits' end. You know, the only way, and I've spent hours talking to counsel president, the mayor, thank you for your time, but the only way that I could support this here tonight is to make sure that that ordinance that was passed last summer stays intact, those bills go out, and I'll donate, two nights a week, I'll go down DPW and check people's paperwork. If we feel that there's going to be that many people lined up trying to get out of paying their fee, I'll go down and check their paperwork and take the burden off of the DPW employees. But I think that those bills should go out. I think that money's owed. I think that those bills should go out at that rate without the family exemption on the non-owner occupied units. And that, going forward, that's the only way I could support the trash fee. If we, if we are in that much of dire need of an across-the-board trash fee, I don't think that the residential property owners, owner-occupieds should subsidize what is in essence a business. I think that we should clean up, pardon the pun, our act on making sure that commercial businesses have a different color barrel in front of their establishments, and that waste management does not pick up a green barrel in front of a business. And we should put it on waste management to supply all our commercial businesses in the city who use city receptacles with a different color barrel, and that they pay appropriately. And if, only if, the only way out of this mess, to make sure we can balance our budget while we wait, pray for development on the Linway, for the marijuana money to come in, for, I think that with almost $700 million in an untaxed property in the City of Lynn, much of that belonging to the many nonprofits that do business in the City of Lynn, that it's time to bring them to the table as well, and ask them to make a contribution to the public safety and public works that they enjoy by being in the City of Lynn. I think it's time for everybody to step up. And if the only way is to put that fee on the owner-occupieds, I say to sunset that and end it in two years. Not come back and say, well, when we're financially stable, we can remove that fee, because I think we all know that wouldn't happen. But at the very least, I would go as long as we kept in line with the $200 fees on the non-owner occupied, back billing what they owe based on the ordinance that you all passed, minus myself and Counsel Field, last year, and move forward from that. That money's owed, and we shouldn't be asking owner-occupied owners to subsidize what is in essence a business. Thank you.
Mr. President, could I ask either Peter Karen or James Lamanna, could you address the issue of whether or not the city could back bill what this council voted for?
If this passes as written with the amendment, the June ordinance from last year would be repealed. This would probably be more proper for an amendment to the section that deals with trash fees. Especially since Counsel Staubed has made at least one change to the ordinance on the books, it sounds like perhaps two. One regarding relatives, and two, there was a two-tier system that made it especially, made it even more difficult, or made it difficult. It was 150, my understanding, for Lynn residents that owned rental units, and if you lived outside the city, it was 220. So, what was being proposed here by Counsel Staubed would be an amendment to an ordinance that would require a public hearing. If it were to be included in this bailout, I think it would be proper to make an amendment to the home rule petition to reflect the two-tier system on whether it's owner-occupied or commercial, or rentals.
Counsel Fields.
Mr. Karen, I think you'd probably be able to best answer this question. I had received some phone calls from those in multifamilies comparing themselves to single families, where a single family would have a four-bedroom home compared to a two-bedroom apartment, producing same amount of trash, maybe even a single-family home having two barrels. How are we going to be collecting on both of those?
Well, under the original ordinance that was passed, that person would have been paying $880 a year for trash fee. Under the current ordinance, they'd be paying $360 a year.
In a single family with two barrels?
They would be paying $90 a year. Say, the proposal is on a per-unit basis. It doesn't take into account number of bedrooms. That would just, you know, make it much more difficult to administer.
Thank you for the clarification.
Counsel Barton.
Mr. President, if I remember, the last time we did these trash things, and we kept making these amendments, we did too many amendments, and we got ourselves in trouble with it where it never happened. So, I'm against any amendment.
Any other discussion?
May I make a fast comment?
No, you can't. Roll call.
What's the, what's the roll call on the amendment?
No, the roll call is on the home rule petition.
Home rule petition, okay.
Well, I've already called for a roll call. I asked if there was any more discussion.
That's what I think. Jeff!
I said, why don't you just come up with a shrimp on a silver platter answer instead of going on?
Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubed?
No.
No. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Want to take a five-minute break?
Yes.
Five-minute break. We don't need to do a roll call.
I know you already did it.
Public hearings to be set down?
shows for carnival to be held at Keeney Park, June 21st through the 24th, with setup from June 18th to the 20th.
Motion to set them down? Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Committee reports, education and environmental affairs. Diana?
Unanimous vote of the committee.
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubed?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Ways and Means, could you please read the transfers?
Transfer the sum of $333.12 from the account of the council expense to the account of unpaid bills for the prior-year council, to fund unexpected expense from prior year.
Counsel Annette?
Mr. President, yes, the committee voted unanimously to approve and make a motion to accept.
Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubed?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
License committee, Counsel Walsh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Order that the, yep.
Ordinance?
No, one more.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Order that the city comptroller be and is hereby authorized to take the following action. Certify and available fund the amount of $4,845,192.00 as allotted for the City of Lynn Economic Community Development by the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development, EED, for MassWorks Infrastructure Program Grant Funding for the new YMCA infrastructure project.
Counsel Annette? A unanimous vote of the committee? Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubed?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Motion made. Seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubed?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubed?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Public Properties and Parks Committee, Counsel Staubed.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of items on the agenda. First was to reject the Marshall bid proposal, which was non-responsive and basically constituted a counteroffer, two hours. So, it was against the RFP, voted unanimously to reject. We also unanimously voted to send ISD out to eight city-owned properties to inspect them, secure those that are vacant, and to bring back to us those that are not vacant, and to instruct a legal department to begin eviction proceedings in the form of a motion.
Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes.